Good evening. I'd like to bring the meeting to order and ask that we'll be called, please. Feldman? Howson Kay?
Here.
Holt Hauser?
Here.
Humboldt?
Here.
Wagenbach?
Here.
Wisdom?
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand in the front of the meeting. At first, please give a brief greeting to the United States of America and to the Republic of America for which this is here, on a nation under God, indivisible, with every single breath of this world. Thank you. The board will now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. And we will begin with Dr. Dearman at the superintendent's report. Dr.?
I'd like to start by recognizing one of our high school teachers that's here with his wife this evening. His name is Mr. Ed Talon. I've known Ed. We started counting, we stopped at 20-plus years because we were dating ourselves. In those 20-plus years, if you know Mr. Talon, you'll agree, I don't think I've ever heard anybody say anything bad about the guy. I mean, he's just a wonderful person, and he did a wonderful act. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Adrian to talk about.
Well, you may or may not have heard the news, but Mr. Talon, on October 1st is a busy day first. That's a busy week because that was our homecoming week. And we had a lot going on, a lot of transitions. Students were excited. We had an assembly coming up. And I'm in my office getting ready to go out to the assembly, and a student comes running down to my office, actually two students, and they said, "We need help. There's someone choking in Mr. Talon's room." So, oh my gosh, you know, that's a dreadful horse nightmare when something comes up to one of your students is in danger, a staff member is in danger. So as I'm running down to Mr. Talon's room, and if you're not familiar with the office, the office is obviously in the front of the school. Mr. Talon's room happens to be all the way at the other end of the school. So as I'm getting down there, I am recapping what I need to do for a student choking, you know. I'm going through all that, our training that we have online every year. And by the time I get there, I thought Ed may need to perform CPR on me because I was excited out of breath. Fortunately, he had everything under control. The girl had passed the jolly ranch that was lodged in her airway, and Mr. Talon was able to give her the Heimlich maneuver to dislodge that. So, he remained really composed, but I could see in his eyes, he was glad the moment had passed, he was glad that there was help there. But the girl was obviously visibly upset, I mean, as any of us would be. And we cleared the room and made Mr. Talon, gave him a little space. Miss McDonald, our nurse, came in, took her out, and I think that, at that time, Mr. Talon realized the gravity of the situation that he had been through. And, you know, as we go through those situations, we always, first of all, hope that we never have to do something like that, right? We hope that our procedures are in place and nothing bad happens, but we know inevitably something's going to happen, so you've got to be prepared for it. And at that time, we hope that we have the courage and the skills to execute what needs to be done. And, you know, like Dr. Dearman said, there's not a nicer man in the building than Ed Talon. I know he didn't wish to be in that spot, but I think we're all very thankful that he was in that spot and was able to execute like he did. So, Ed's here with his wife, Ellen. If we could give them a round of applause.
It's got a plaque that we made for Mr. Talon. It's the Eagle Talon Award. Presented by Edward Talon in recognition of your courageous and heroic life-saving actions that saved the life of a student. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Talon. Thank you, Mr. Talon. Appreciate that. Ellen, thanks for sharing them with us, too. We appreciate that. While I'm up here, I'm just going to talk a little bit more about homecoming week. I would like to thank our homecoming sponsors, Ms. Roberts and Mr. Barrington, our homecar, sorry, our student council president, Luke, no, not Luke Ackley, his sister Paige Ackley, and all of the student council members who helped provide some normalcy for our students and some excitement for our students. It was super enjoyable to see them be kids again. And, you know, the whole week was fun. They played a great week. We had the football game, we had the dance, all that stuff was really, really rewarding to see, and it felt a little bit for a moment like school. So it was a good thing. So thanks to those people for making that happen.
Thank you, Dr. Adrian. I only have a few items tonight. First order of business, FOIA requests. We had one payroll information request that was completed by Mr. Mike McKenzie, and that has been satisfied. The knee ratings have been released for 2022, and the Dunlap School District was named the number-one school district in the Peoria area with an A-plus rating, as well as being the top-rated downstate district in the state of Illinois. So let's again do it well. If you are not familiar with this rating, it's based on rigorous analysis of key statistics and millions of reviews from students and parents using data from the U.S. Department of Education. Ranking factors include state test scores, college readiness, graduation, SAT/ACT scores, teacher quality, public school, district ratings, and more. So it's a very thorough and exhaustive process, so well-deserved and well-earned by the Dunlap School District. Also, would like to take a moment to congratulate all our various extracurricular activities and their progress in their conference, their regionals, their sectionals, and their states. I wouldn't name them all, but there are too many, I'm afraid I'd miss somebody and leave them out in the penum. So we have several teams at multiple levels doing very well. So congrats to them and good luck in their efforts. And that is all that I have.
Thank you, Dr. Dearman. Wonderful news, and we love to hear how great our district is performing and just a reflection of the hard work of our employees, our teachers, our administrators, our extracurricular sponsors. So thank you for that, of course. Greatly appreciated. At this time, we'll move on to public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? If so, please raise your hand. Come on down, dude. Jade, I'm sorry. Mr. Hammer, how's that? Hamer. Before addressing the board, I'm going to have to remind you of our process. For Board Policy 2, Call 230, we ask that when addressing the board, please identify yourself and be brief. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. Speakers asked to please conduct oneself with respect and civility towards others. Individuals less than 18 years of age are permitted to address the board if a capacity fighting is her parent or guardian. The board typically does not engage in two-way conversations during the public portion of the meeting. Any follow-up response necessary will be addressed by the administration at a later date. To be respectful of others and to protect the confidentiality, complaints against individuals, students, staff members, board members, either named or unnamed, shall not be orally presented to the Board of Education. Such complaints should be put in writing, signed by the person or persons making the charges, and delivered to the Board of Education Secretary. That's Mr. Wagenbach. At this time, I would like to ask anyone who wishes to address the board, come forward, sign the public participation sheet, and then each speaker may come to the podium to begin speaking into the microphone, stating their name and the topic they will be addressing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So Jade Hamer, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a daughter at Dunlap Middle and a son at Hickory Gobb Elementary. And my usual topics addressed tonight, I guess I'm a regular now, mask mandates and quarantines. And I will keep it very brief tonight, under five minutes. Thank you. So just to recap, I last spoke at the September board meeting, focusing on mandatory mask policies in schools. I reviewed some compelling legal challenges to mask mandates and quarantine rules at many levels of government, such as Governor Pritzker, the Illinois State Board of Education, the Illinois Department of Public Health, and local school districts. I closed by communicating my intent to immediately file a lawsuit against Dunlap School District to address quarantine and mandatory masking. Promises made, promises kept. This lawsuit is filed. For parents interested in the details, I'll address briefly tonight. When was the lawsuit filed? Hot out the presses, noon today, October 20th. Jurisdiction? Right now, Seventh Judicial Court in McCopen County, and I'll address this later. Representation for the good guys. Thomas DeBoer of Silver Lake Group. The plaintiff, myself, Jade Hamer, on behalf of my minor children. However, it will represent all parents with children in Dunlap School District, 323. Additionally, 144 parent groups covering other schools. Some local, some small, some very large, such as Chicago Public School District. Defendants. Dunlap School Board, representing Dunlap Community Unit, Unit School District 323. Additionally, 144 other schools. Additionally, the Illinois State Board of Education, the Illinois Department of Public Health, and Governor J.B. Pritzker. Counts. Eleven declaratory judgments or requests for injunction. All legal challenges against mask mandates or quarantines. You might ask why 11 complaints? This is a big swing to fully address the issues once and for all. So let's get to the bottom of it. Therefore, the complaints are filed against several defendants, which I just named. The timing of the first hearing. The request for temporary restraining order will be November 5, 1:30 p.m. It's a public hearing. I'll be in attendance. I anticipate the location may shift from McCopen County based on the defendants that I just listed. What to do in the near term? Near term. I would sit back and let the judicial process work. The media is now aware. I'm not a Facebook fan, but I hear Edgar County Watch Dogs has a good brief of the lawsuit and the full text of the lawsuit. Or you can contact me directly at hamerjn@hotmail.com if you'd like more info. To the school board, I recommend you continue to fight against ISBE. You can choose to not fight back against my lawsuit and focus your time and our taxpayer money elsewhere. With this big swipe lawsuit, including the governor, ISBE, the Illinois Department of Public Health, your attorneys at Miller Hall Triggs will sit on the sidelines, which is a consistent approach. To those parents on the other side of the issue, understand the fight is not anti-mask or anti-vax. If the lawsuit is successful, continue with masks if you believe that is the best choice for your children. The lawsuit is about our kids and parents' rights to choose what's best for them. It's about standing up for the rule of law, due process, individual liberty, and against those that try to take this away. Mandatory vaccines. For teachers and staff facing mandatory vaccines, lawsuits are coming, I promise. Thank you for your time and this opportunity to speak.
Okay, we'll now move on. There's no one else who wishes to address the board this evening. This concludes the public participation portion of the meeting, and the board will move on to information discussion. Just feel like the account reports are included in the packet this early discussion. Next, Mrs. Hart will present information regarding pre-K and early childhood education programs. Mrs. Hart?
Hi. I'm Melissa Hart, Director of Student Services. Hillary Taylor will be presenting. She's our Early Childhood Coordinator and Student Service Director as Coordinator. So she will be presenting on our preschool programs.
Our preschool programs are growing, as is everything else in Dunlap. Currently, we have one Bright Futures classroom in the district. We service 10 students with IEPs and 20 Gen Ed students who qualify through the screening process. We currently have a waiting list of 34 students, and at this time, we're only taking four-year-olds into our program so that we can guarantee they get at least one year of preschool before moving to kindergarten.
And I want to mention that Bright Futures, we get 100% pay from the state for our teacher and our aide. That is in our Bright Futures program.
Listen, could you say that again a little bit? I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, so with Bright Futures, the teacher and the aide, we get reimbursed for their
So we have two early childhood classrooms. One is now at Dunlap Grade School and one is at Wilder Way Elementary School. The program at Dunlap Grade School is full. They're half-day programs. We can have 10 students in the morning session and 10 in the afternoon. And at Wilder Way, we currently have three available spots open. Like I said, the maximum is 10 students in these classrooms. Each child goes through an evaluation process. They qualify for special education and have IEPs for various disabilities, and they also receive their related services while they're at school.
That's the ECE program, not the Bright Futures program. Two different programs, but Bright Futures will also take children with IEPs.
Right. We have a blended program for Bright Futures, so we can have five students with IEPs.
So are they all funded, as you said?
No. ECE is not funded.
ECE, though, is required.
It is required.
Except if they have an IEP, you have to...
We have to service them, so once our...
Can you maybe just give a brief overview of the difference between blended Bright Futures and ECE for those that are not educators in the room?
Yes. So the blended Bright Futures program is for students who qualify in the Bright Futures under that at-risk umbrella. They go through the preschool screening with Bright Futures, and they look at all the different developmental domains, and then they qualify through Bright Futures. Students that are in Bright Futures that have IEPs are typically students who, you know, just have developmental delays, they're working on some key areas to be successful in the classroom, and it is very beneficial for them to have that opportunity to be with their Gen Ed peers during their preschool time because they'll go into a Gen Ed kindergarten classroom with different supports.
So the way I look at it is Bright Futures, everyone has to go through a screening. So they call us, they go through the screening. Our more sub-youn profound are going to go into early childhood because they have a lot more delays that need to be looked at with the IEP. In Bright Futures, some of them are just on the edge, they may not qualify for the IEP, but their screening alerted us that they needed some support.
So we are required to do child find throughout the school year. So we have to have preschool screenings to show that we are, you know, making sure that we're meeting the needs of all of these students. So we have our screening dates. At each screening, we screen about 16 students for the Bright Futures program. Because Bright Futures is full, if they qualify, they're then placed on a waiting list. If the student comes to the screening and we feel that they need further evaluation, they're then referred for the play-based evaluation or just a speech referral for a speech evaluation to see if they need more services. We also have our early childhood transition list, which is through ISBE. I check that monthly. There are currently, this is actually an error, last week there were 27 students, now there are 32 children on our list who will transition out of early intervention once they turn three between November and May. So we have 32 students that we need to take a look at in some capacity.
So these students are from, they're in the zero-to-three program with the state. So they're getting services during birth to three, and once they hit their third birthday, then they become ours, and we have to screen them, evaluate them, and look if they need services in the school district.
You're looking at two-year-olds.
Right.
We want to talk...
We look about 35 months.
We want to, right before they turn three, because once they hit their third birthday, we're required to provide services for them.
Okay.
So at this point, we have quite a few open evaluations. Like I said, you know, our classrooms are full. We have three available ECE spots, and we are currently going to evaluate 13 children between now and Christmas vacation. And like I said, we have to get them all in. A lot of ours, six of them right now, were referred for more evaluation from the preschool screening that we had in August. So in looking at being full, we're, you know, in discussions of how are we going to make sure we're providing services for our students once we're full? So option one, we can pay tuition of other districts to take our students and provide them related services. The only available program that has spots that are willing to share with us right now is Oak Grove Elementary School in Bartonville. And the cost would be $1,114 a month per student, plus transportation.
Now, we transport students currently to Bartonville, but we wouldn't want to have them sharing the same route because they're more of our severe, profound emotional and behavioral students that are older. And busing transportation, I did just get a number from them this, the end of last week, is about $230 a day for transportation class, paying the bus driver, paying the monitor, gas and mileage.
So our second option that we've talked about is opening our own ECE classroom in January. The cost for that is approximately $27,000. You know, the biggest issue with that is where are we going to put it on our classroom? So we've kind of looked at just different options and ways we can get creative with the limited space that we have available for us.
Isn't that possibly half of the teachers? Because we'd only be hiring in part-time.
Right.
So it's kind of give or take when we look at teacher salary.
Question, that $27,000, would some of those be capital costs, or is that $27,000?
It's just hiring a teacher for part-time.
So it's not, that's going to go on year to year to year?
It depends. So at the end of this year, we can discuss a Bright Futures classroom option. The contracts run every five years where Bright Futures comes to the school district and say, "How many do you want? How many classrooms do you want?" So it's an every-five-year cycle. So our plan would be to look at renewing our Bright Futures, so only having this early childhood in January to the end of the school year, and then next year possibly opening up a couple more Bright Futures classrooms because that is, the grant would provide our salary and our aide cost, which is amazing. And Bright Futures is really a great blended program that parents want. A lot of times when we're recommending early childhood, they're asking for Bright Futures because they want their child in that blended, inclusive environment, but we just don't have the spots for them. So we would like to look at when our grant is renewed for next school year, two to three more Bright Futures classrooms because we're reimbursed at 100%. Then we can have 10 students with IEPs and 20 students who are at risk...
In each classroom.
In each classroom. So we could service more students that way.
Any questions?
Yeah, yes.
As we look through some of our early intervention, I think anyone who knows me knows that. As we're looking at our footprint and, we've seen the projections, we've had an increase in students this year, right? I guess my concern is going to be if we looked at if we add these, I don't need to know that, this is a great presentation, what would we do if we run out of space? Because currently, we have that issue in mind.
Right, and that's currently a discussion that the administration team and I have often, when we're looking at programs that are needed and required, it's the space. What is our, you know, what are we looking at next year to add new students? How many classrooms are going to need to be added? Next month, I will be sharing our DGB, our emotional behavioral program, and that's going to be taking two classrooms that review, one at the Valley and one at the high school. So we're bringing those students back, but then we need classroom space. And for early childhood, that's, in Bright Futures, that's the same discussion. Hickory Grove House, all three of these programs, they needed the classroom space. So we had to move them to DGAS and Wilder Way. So space is a topic that we talk about all the time.
Do you have a team that's working, working this?
We talk about, yes, we have committees that we work on.
And also, just a note as far as students moving in, we had seven students transfer in to our early childhood program this year because our parents want to be here. They know that this is the best school district. They know that their students are going to get exactly what they need here, you know. And I think it's amazing that parents are, you know, willing to move here with their child's in preschool to make sure that they're getting what they need. Also, just in our talks and adding classrooms and talking about adding more Bright Futures classrooms, we currently have 338 students in kindergarten within our school district, and we're only able to provide Gen Ed preschool services to 20 students at our school. So in thinking about growing in the future, that's, you know, if we could provide services to even half of that 338, we're providing our services that we know are the best and what we know our students need to prepare them to be more ready when they start caring for them.
And that is one of the discussions I talk with my elementary principals, is what kindergarten looks like, and there's students coming to kindergarten that are not prepared because they've never been in a preschool, but a lot of them are sitting on waiting lists as well. So that's our presentation.
I'd like to make a comment. As a former superintendent and principal, we had four Bright Futures classrooms in our school building, and we often service children from the Livestone area and other schools that couldn't have a classroom. But Bright Futures grant, it's a win-win. I served on the board, I watched this program work. The children are better prepared, they're working on pre-emerging skills, you know, you can't not want a Bright Futures program if you have the space. The problem is the space. Now, I mean, if we had even temporary buildings, they call them temporary buildings, but we're talking about, we had ours sometimes that they were in a school mobile building, and it worked out well. Oftentimes, you like to have them in the building because it's nice to have them close. But I'm here to tell you as a administrator, we spent a lot of time in the Bright Futures wing. It was a pleasure, it was a joy to see those children getting skills that they may not be getting elsewhere. And they do a lot of great programs for the parents as well. Many of the parents are able to access programs through the Bright Futures program, Teen Mothers, I mean, just you name it. I just, if we had the space, I can't see not doing the Bright Futures. And then, too, you can also cut down on some of the ECE at times. ECE is a federal, I mean, it's specialized, so it's a federal program, but you're not getting a full reimbursement. Bright Futures, you are. So I mean, just to make two cents, I just, I can't speak highly enough of Bright Futures and the Bright Futures administration. They're just wonderful and very real.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Early on in the presentation, you talked about the waiting list, 30-some kids. Will you hit that again? I'm not, I didn't follow that, so where...
So for Bright Futures, we screen them, and they may qualify for one of the spots of Bright Futures, but we don't have any. And so since we're not legally required to provide them that spot, we're not moving them out. ECE, we are, but in Bright Futures, they go on a waiting list, and right now, we have 32 four-year-olds on a waiting list. They don't get in, and those spots don't hold a half.
But those would be the ones, though, that wouldn't be paid for if we had the space and had the spots?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You said Oak Grove, Bartonville, right?
Yes, has spots available.
How many spots do they have?
They only have seven. She said at this point, they would only be willing to give us four to five, just based on their numbers, because they'll have students turning three throughout the year as well.
And then your transportation costs will go up quite a bit, considering students that are sending them so far.
Right, and then we would probably have parents not wanting them on the bus for that long.
If we had a facility, we could even provide, I mean, I'm just saying, looking long-term, you can provide services for other districts if you had a really nice facility, which is what Norwood did, and it's definitely not a losing proposition.
It is not. We want to prepare these kids for kindergarten.
Parents are easier, right? It's all funded.
Grant-funded program.
The Bright Futures.
No, ECE pays that.
The ECE, they go, they're specialized with IEPs, so we do get some reimbursement, and they do count towards our grant number. We do get some, we'll get child find money from our grant. It's a small number, but we do get, we count them as our IEP students.
The parent is never responsible for any of it. Correct.
Not for ECE.
No.
Our Bright Futures, it is a free.
And the, 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 sorry, I'm still... But the Bright Futures program is something where the children are screened, and there are several factors on the sheet. One could be low birth weight, one could be hearing loss, one could be low-income family, one-parent family, no telephone in the home. I mean, I'm sure it's changed since...
Right, and when we qualify for early childhood, we're more extensive. We have social worker, science, speech, occupational, physical therapy, they're all evaluating those students because they have to qualify for that IEP.
And those are our children anyway, looking, they're our children. So if we can get them on the front end and help those children, they're going to probably have a lot better chance of succeeding once they get it.
And another thing that we see quite a bit of in the Bright Futures program, as well as in the ECE program, is English as a second language, you know. And that, Bright Futures does a fantastic job with our ESL students, you know, as well as our ECE program. But Bright Futures really does quite a bit with that. And that, Bright Futures does a fantastic job with our ESL students, you know, as well as our ECE program. But Bright Futures really does quite a bit with that. I got one more question.
Yeah.
One last one. You know, sometimes we've got to think outside the box here. Is there a way that we could partner with other schools that potentially do have space available for something like that? I don't know the answer to that, I'll talk to you more about it.
Yeah, and Hillary's called multiple districts, they just don't have the spots either.
They don't have, they don't have the space, do they actually physically have space in their building?
We have.
I just want to make sure that we, you know, we have, there's lots of kids here that can use services.
Some, some places run a church.
Right, the earlier we get to them, well, you guys know that, I don't have to tell you, you guys are the experts.
Yes.
But take a look at that, you're absolutely right, what we can do to benefit these kids.
Dr. Dearman, we have some evidence, Dr. Hubble's mentioned mobile classrooms. And frankly, we're packed, our bricks and mortar classrooms are packed. The only way that we can address this in any kind of calm fashion is those mobile-type classrooms. Are we utilizing all of ours at this point?
We are not. The classrooms outside the middle school, the middle, are not being used for students at all. When we restructured the enrollments, we moved all the kids back in the building, but we are using that for storage. And two of those rooms will need some extensive work just because of the age and deterioration that we've seen, but two of them, and we looked at them, are decent. So those are an option.
The, the, the one thing about the middle school is play, like, equipment. We would have to make sure they had equipment for playground.
I agree, and these are exactly the kind of students that we want to do what we can to get them started on the right foot.
And they're the cutest little things. And if you ever had a stressful moment in your day, you just go to one of the buildings and deal with them, and your, all your worries are gone.
I, I could use that on a lot of days. Bit of a drive.
And you would be welcome.
You would. They are the cutest.
I mean, is this something we should look into?
I, I support it. I think, I do, but the grant, I just can't speak highly enough. As I said, it's, it's never less expensive to pay tuition to somebody else and ship your children there, you know.
I don't think those families that are wanting to move into the Delaware School District would be real happy about having to turn and ship somewhere else.
Absolutely. And also, we're talking about, I mean, toddlers, you know, these kiddos are kiddos who are turning three. And then to say to a mom, oh, we want to provide your, your three-year-old with these services in their first school experience, but we're going to send them on a bus to Bartonville every day.
For twenty-five minutes or whatever.
Yeah.
Currently, we do have the spaces. We've talked about different options, and the options that they're presenting, we can do at this time. You are absolutely correct in that we are getting very tight. And if we see another hundred and fifty-plus student growth next year, we're going to have to have a more in-depth conversation about moving forward with space issues. But we are okay for now.
Thank you.
Thank you for a great presentation. Thanks. Is there any further discussion? We'll move on to Dr. Dearman, he will be discussing the current school plan and any adjustments and/or additions that, that they have or will need to be made. Dr. Dearman?
Well, a lot of the information I was going to provide was already kind of shared with Mr. Hamer. In the last, from Friday to today, there's been three different court cases dealing with, Friday dealt with the staff's ability to refuse to test. And then we had one earlier this week about recognition status with IHSA. And then today we had one filed, as we all know, concerning mask and quarantine. I know no one really enjoys being named in a lawsuit, but to be honest, I'm somewhat relieved in that there's been so much back and forth. We need a culminating event to happen so that we have a definitive answer on what we can or cannot do and remove some of the threats and different items that have been thrown our way that caused our decision to be reversed. So I, I'm not disappointed in where that's going, or where it's at right now. I, I hope it goes in the direction of giving us a definitive answer, one way or the other, so that we know, and then return that local control back to the district. And it's not just about masks and vaccines and things of that nature. There were six hundred pieces of legislation passed in the last session, a hundred of which dealt with education. And most of those are unfunded mandates that are just crippling districts and erode the local control. You know, districts like Van Dalia, Jennifer Garrison is the leader of the Make It Local, the Op-Ed group. They are still requiring students to wear masks because of the threats that have been led, led against all of us that are in that type of situation. But she is leading that group. I have a meeting with that group tomorrow at ten AM. It's a virtual meeting. So I think it's gaining some traction, and I'm glad of that. Hopefully we can come to a decision here that's definitive here very soon. As Mr. Hamer referred, there are several court dates coming up that I hope will lead us in that direction.
Thank you, Dr. Dearman. Any discussion? Next, Mr. McKenzie will present information regarding the non-certified employee wage guidelines.
I didn't create a, create a PowerPoint or anything, so.
That's okay.
I'm just going to talk about the reports that I provided to you and tell you, you know, just update you on where we are with studying and making decisions on the issue. As most of you are aware, you know, we're experiencing shortages of applicants for our non-certified positions and our certified positions. It's very hard to hire people. We're, we're having the exact same problem that every other district and every other business is having right now of hiring people, period, much less qualified and retaining them. You know, we want to, we not only want to hire qualified employees, we want to retain them once we have hired them and trained them and stuff. So that's the situation we're in. We also have the issue of minimum wages going up to twelve dollars an hour in just a few days, you know, on January first. Minimum wage goes up from eleven dollars to twelve dollars. I think a lot of people think it's already fifteen dollars an hour, but it is currently eleven dollars an hour, and it goes up to twelve dollars an hour on January first. That will immediately have caused certain positions to be making more money, things like crossing guards, you know, will have, you know, make, now make twelve dollars an hour. There's a few other positions here and there, not very many of them, but that, that make under twelve dollars an hour. So that will immediately require us to pay those people twelve dollars an hour. And of course, then this causes compression, you know, because, you know, as the minimum wage goes up, you know, you'll normally raise people's salaries to a dollar an hour every year. So, you know, the minimum wage gets closer and closer to some of our other positions that we have. So that's really what's causing these problems, and it's just, just the general shortage. I had a meeting today with the local school business officials, and literally Morgan is, is surveying everybody in the day because they're, you know, they're talking about aid positions right now. They, they currently pay twelve seventy-five an hour for aides to start, and, but they have, they have full-time aides, so they automatically qualify for benefits. Usually, we have part-time aides, so they don't automatically qualify for benefits. Short-term solutions that we've already implemented is we've temporarily, temporarily taken off the, the mask that people can work. So if an aide is currently working five point seven five hours and they want to take on a temporary assignment doing something else, at the end of the year, if they've worked over the number of hours, they will qualify for health insurance next year. And same with bus drivers, we've temporarily taken off their, their max number of hours they can work in a year. And that will qualify some of them for benefits next year as part of the annual look-back that we have to do. That's just part of things that they have to do. In the report, I put in a lot of references to Peoria Public Schools. One, it's very easy to get information from them. I can call, I can call, you know, one of my former employees and get that from her, but also they have, you know, you, most of their employees are covered by union contracts, so it's easy enough to look at their union contracts. I also got a survey about aides. I've got ser, different surveys, you know, I've either done myself or, you know, got them from other school business officials that have been done stuff. So we've been looking at typical hours. The immediate thing I think we can do to help with the aide situation is we really need to sit down and decide, should all aides automatically start at fifteen dollars an hour? Because there's certain aide positions that require more skill and/or more physical ability. I mean, if you're in a severe profound classroom at the high school and you have to pick up children and things, you obviously have to have physical abilities that not every, not every aide is willing to take on. So those positions are very hard to fill, making fifteen dollars an hour. Peoria has segregated that by having what they call behavioral assistance and then aides. You know, I'm not necessarily advocating that that's what we should do, but, you know, somehow or another, we need to allow principals to hire people that have more experience or are going into harder positions than we can pay them for, so that that's a study we need to do internally with both principals and central office to have to decide which ones are the best positions. Probably life skilled, probably severe profound circles, but just a matter of figuring that out. So I don't necessarily have a distinct suggestion or recommendation tonight, but that's one of the things that we, we, I think it's an obvious thing we can do to at least help the immediate situation with aides. And I put on here, you know, I put in on the major categories that have the most people. We also have issues with nurses that I didn't put on here, where, you know, are we paying them enough to start? And are, you know, and there's other categories that, that are smaller groups of people that I didn't, you know, think to put on. I didn't put everything, I didn't want to make a twelve-page report here, I just wanted to make a short report. Yeah, and aides, I didn't say, I don't know if I said, but aides have, you know, there's currently fifteen open positions for aides in the district as of Friday. I didn't ask if they had changed, but as of Friday, get fifteen open positions. So our real next steps about this is really both here and in the district office with principals and everything, is to, you know, figure out this aide situation, you know, should, should we have a distinct, you know, two, two category of aides, you know, one-on-ones and, you know, behavioral kind of aides being one, and, you know, harder to build. And I don't, I'm just, I'm an accountant, I'm not necessarily, you know, I've done this for a long time, so I know a lot about schools, but it's not, you know, my focus is usually on numbers. And so I need to bring some more people into this to decide which physicians would, are we talking about. We also need to figure out the, you know, I basically know the ones, you know, this, this minimum wage issue that's going to be, a, 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 continue to be an issue, not only this year, but next year, and the year after, and the year after. And so, you know, I need to develop a plan on how we're going to deal with those steps because, you know, in, in three years, when it's fifteen dollars an hour, we can't really be paying aides fifteen dollars an hour to start, you know, it's just, they're going to have to, we're going to have to gradually increase those. We, we, I would talk about the bus term, bus driver long, thing, you know, I don't know if it's a long-term solution, allowing them to work more hours and then, you know, be eligible for benefits, which is increased cost, or whether that's something we'll be able to pull back from later, but right now it's with the bus drivers. And then my last point here, I, you know, I just explained what I mean, but the discussed possibility of salary ranges. Right now, we have, you know, beginning wages, you know, so fifteen dollars an hour is what is kind of the beginning wage for an aide. And doesn't matter if somebody has experience, you know, maybe they've done it for ten years up in the Chicago suburbs, and they've moved here, and now they want to, you know, they want to be an aide here, you know, we would offer them a job for fifteen dollars an hour. And so, in a perfect world, we have more of a range which we could, you know, place people on, you know, depending on their years of experience and their education levels, things like that. And so, you know, maybe you have an average, and, you know, fifteen percent below that's the starting wage, fifteen percent above that's the, you know, the maximum wage. I, I don't, that's just one way that some salary rates are set up. It's not the, yeah, so that's probably the long-term solution here. If bus drivers comes to us and they, never been a bus driver, and we help them get their license, you know, so, so on, so forth, they're going to make the minimum wage. But if they come to us from somewhere else and they've done this for ten years, they've got tons of experience, then you probably should slot them in higher than the, you know, the minimum. And so, the problem with all of these things that I've kind of talked about, crazy rate is it breaks up the budget. And so, budget's currently standing with current pay scales, but with full, with full employment. But we, you know, we all have full employment right now of all these positions, we have all those positions for, so. So those, you know, so those are kind of our next steps. So, like I said, I don't really have a recommendation other than the fact that we need to get the, you know, I know, you know, there's a formal committee, but a group of principals and, and curriculum people and myself to determine, you know, this aide, the aide situation, if that's what we think will solve the problem. To some extent, I'm not convinced that just raising salaries is going to solve the problem because it's not solving the problem elsewhere. But certain ones we do need to raise the salary for because they're not getting, they're either not getting benefits, so they're very hard to fill, or they're under-marked kind of situations. I could talk on and on, but I.
So you'll be coming back to us with recommendations?
That's correct. I mean, that's the, long-term, we'll have recommendations tonight, I'm not really prepared. I'm still not certain what would be the right solution, so rather than do a B J R, you know, let's just raise this, you know, sixteen dollars an hour, all right? I'm not sure that would solve our, you know, be the right move and solve our problems, but, but that is probably what we've come in certain positions that we recommend raising the startings out of some positions. But it's not tonight, tonight we're just still studying it. We've made two adjustments this month, this past month, with removing the mask hours that people can work. And it's helped with bus drivers certainly. I don't know if it will help with aide issues quite yet, but yes, with bus drivers. And then, like I said, the next month or at some point in the future, we'll come to more definitive decisions, I'll have more recommendations of what we can do.
So you could have aides and bus drivers both qualifying for benefits?
We could next year if they work over the, I don't remember the number of hours already. You know, with the changes, the Fourth Care Act several years ago, they, they created a, you know, look back period, you have to do a look back period once a year, and if they work over a certain number of hours, so they're considered, you know, have to have worked thirty hours a week. It's not thirty weeks' hours for the entire year, it's thirty hours while we were in session, you know. And so there's, there's a certain number of hours schools use as a look back.
Thousand eighty.
A thousand eighty, a thousand eighty, I'm thinking, it's a thousand something, but it's a thousand and eighteen of the hours. So if they work over a thousand eighty hours, then they are eligible for things like health insurance and stuff. So then they, they would have to choose whether they want to.
It's forty hour average. That's not right, is it?
It's a thirty hour average.
Twenty eighty.
It's forty.
Seven.
It's a thousand.
Forty, it's forty a week then. Okay. It'll happen, whatever.
Yeah, so when schools, when it first happened, schools thought it'd be over the whole year and we'd never have it, it, an issue, but yeah, it's over only when we're in session. And I don't remember how the hours came up, but exactly how they come in.
That's two thousand eighty, sorry.
You're right again. Two thousand eighty is a normal full-time, well, forty hour a week kind of thing, fifty-two weeks a year, so yeah, that's two thousand.
So there are people that are interested in teaching assistant positions. Maybe some of the barrier there obviously must be the qualifications that you need to be a DA. Are they considering maybe giving credentials for that? I mean, you have fifteen spots that aren't filled, surely any help.
There's many discussions at various levels because this is not a unique problem.
Right.
So lots of things are being discussed, trying to get people in.
Yeah, and you're going to get lit, you have to get your license and all these kind things, but it's not, you know. I, I, I can tell you, there's like a fight to interview people when they apply, so we can. So between the principals, so, you know, they very quickly get the phone call from a principal if somebody applies for an aide position here right now.
Well, I guess certified and qualified are two different things. I mean, there are a lot of probably great parents that would be excellent helpers in the classroom, but if they don't have the credentials, then they can't do the job.
They still have the job to fill. They gotta have strictness.
Like I said, Morton's having the same problem. All the districts around her have the same.
But we are gaining students and other districts seem to be losing them. So it's gonna be a problem.
It's a hard decision. It's a hard problem to really analyze all these numbers and it's just, there's no obvious solution because you're not getting applicants. So it's not like, you know, suddenly you've decided to pay a dollar more would that increase the applicant pool?
I don't know. I really don't for the teachers because, you know, if you need an aide, if you need an aide. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Winkinsy. Appreciate the information. This concludes the information discussion. The board will now move on to the consent agenda. Is there any discussion regarding items in the consent agenda? May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I want to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Holshauser. May I have a second?
Second, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Hold on here. Thank you for leaving. I'm sorry.
All those in favor, say aye.
All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carried.
I would like to propose that action item E, which is heart technology, those gentlemen are here and they've been waiting patiently. Is anyone opposed if we move them up so that they don't have to wait any longer?
That's fine.
Okay. Here is Eric Koontz and he's got two of his staff members with him, Cameron and I don't know-
Cameron and Adam.
Cameron and Adam. When our network went down a few weeks ago, we called in the HR auxiliary, which was Heart Technologies, and I know Cameron was here for sure and helped get us up and running again. As a result of that, last month, we had a meeting with Ben King, who is no longer employed by the district. He resigned to take another position. But he was given a task to come up with a solution to help basically fix some of the issues with what we've had and make it sustainable moving forward. And he did that. He supplied a quote, which I included in your packet, of three hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. It could be right. I do not have the technical expertise to argue that it's right or it's wrong. However, that is a large chunk of money to be spending, and I don't feel comfortable doing so on the recommendation of one individual that's no longer employed by the district. However, we have Heart Technologies here. They're the number one supplier of educational IT in this area, if not probably throughout the whole state. So they have a lot of technical expertise. So I contacted Mr. Koontz and asked him to put together a proposal from what they would need to do, come in and look at our firewalls, our switches, our servers, our wireless, our endpoint devices, and determine what we do or don't have, what is or isn't working, and then determine a plan based on what they learned of what we need to do moving forward. And then off of that, a proposal potentially to do a managed service where they would implement those changes, or potentially we could buy a block of hours for them to do that, or we could just take their findings and hire our own person to implement those changes. But that's where they came into play and that's why he's here tonight. And I thank you for coming, but he is here to answer any technical questions or questions in general you may have about the proposal that was in your board packet.
If there's questions, please let us know. In order to help, which we do want to help the district, to help Dr. Dierman, we need to take this deeper dive. We really need to look at the network and look at all the pieces, define the holes, define the equipment needs replaced, firmware that's out of date, the security risks of it's all of it. It even includes, you know, wireless site surveys for your wireless, your heat maps, just to see where the district is on all campuses. I can't speak to all of it, but these guys tend on a technical level. Cameron's been here before to put out some fires for the district when needed, you know, but he's seen this much of the network. And in order for us to truly make good recommendations moving forward, we need to do this network discovery.
Can you talk about the limited penetration study that you referenced to me?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to bring Cameron for that. So as part of this, you know, we're going to, and Cameron's going to spend some time inside the firewall, looking at cybersecurity, looking for holes, weaknesses there. It's not a full penetration test, right? That is its own posture to decide, but included in this is some time of Cameron's to really go out and see what's in the network and please, please continue.
It's not, it's not just me. It'll be, you know, we have a team of people that'll come in and take a look at your network holistically, right? So my focus tends to be in security, firewall, penetration testing, vulnerability assessment. So really, I'd rather call it rather than penetration test, which is, again, as Eric said, its own thing, I'd call it vulnerability assessment. Where are you guys at? What does it look like? And then if we need to shore it up, we will. You know, the little bits of the network that I've seen, I can tell you that over the years, you guys have spent a great deal of money on the network and it looks like it was well-conceived, but it's aging. The parts of the fix that I was involved in are, I hope they're working for you. I've heard that, you know, varying degrees, but I did get a look at the proposal that you guys had been given for the wireless upgrades. And so I understand what Ben thinks the problem was with the network, but I wouldn't tell you that until I've, until we really assess that, I can't tell you if that's accurate or not, or if it's a deeper, deeper problem, or if it's part of the problem, and I don't know, right? And until I, you know, sit down with a few of you that actually sit on the network all day, you know, I can't get a feel for what the pain points are. And a wireless survey will help me understand what your coverage looks like and what the network looks like. So there's, it's a, it's a, it's a big network and it's a, you know, one of the few towns where your district is actually all your schools, right? You know, so many of the schools around us, every school has its own district and so they're kind of insular. You know, it's a, it's all of the parts here.
So to be clear, I am not asking for the approval of the Presidio quote for three hundred fifty-seven thousand. I am asking for approval so these men can get started for the heart technology study that they just mentioned. That's what I'm asking for this evening.
Which is, which is eighteen thousand dollars?
That is correct.
Are we still having trouble with that?
You can, you can use, you know, you'll have all the data in front of you to hopefully use heart or use somebody else. It's just a third-party look at your network and discovery to see what's out there.
Mr. Wiseman?
Dr. Dierman, I was still having problems with this system in some respects. Or is this a protective, proactive, preventative step that we need to take to assure it doesn't happen again?
We are not having some of the global issues we were having, but we're still having pockets of difficulty, primarily here at the high school in the West Wing that I've been made aware of. Dr. Adrian, is that correct?
West Wing, we have problems and we have problems in the French Wing a little bit. Couple of leaders is continuing to battle. The West Wing is problematic because if you recall, we spent all this money on the technology and we did all the training for future door hopping. We drew by the cameras, big garage, you believe? We get them all there and then like we pull the car out of them, you know. You're involved with scan trucks. So I feel like, you know, it's been, we're pretty contentious when that drops. You know, you get them in here, they log in, they take a, they do a question, takes thirty seconds to load. The next question, they take a drill. There's a problem, particularly with those rings.
I haven't heard the same level of problems at the elementary level.
So can we just look at this one?
Well, it's a network, it's all connected.
I don't think any of us has a problem with figuring out what the cause of that mess was and dating it, so we don't have any idea. I guess my only question is, is this, is us all going to be service-oriented? You're not having to buy a product ahead of time?
Not for the discovery.
But I'll just say in my industry, I rarely will pay fifty percent of a contract upfront for service. It's not that this school district has any kind of reputation, not paying its bills, but if that's the way it is done in the industry, I believe it's you or deal with IT more than I do.
Yeah, if you're referring to like the fifty percent now?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not an issue. It's just a standard contract. We've talked to the owner of our, you know, so how important it is to get this started and, you know, he's allowed us to go ahead and go upon signature, right? We'll get resources assigned and then we'll get started. We'll get employees at that point. I wouldn't be able to get you that amount of fifty percent now. It's just a standard contract, right?
So you can get into this pretty quickly?
We can. There's at least two weeks of work to do while the discovery, it's a big network, a lot of campuses. We will likely need a third week to process all the findings, the gatherings to get the deliverable to you. You know, so in three or four weeks to completion of it. But Lance, our owner, he's ready to assign resources and get started.
Any other questions from board members? May I have a motion to approve the Heart Technologies proposal as presented?
I'll move to approve the Heart Technologies proposal as presented with the carryout that needs to discuss regarding timing.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. You have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Waggonback. Roll call vote.
How's it going?
Hi.
Holshauser?
Hi.
Humble's?
Aye.
Waggonback?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Felton?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carried. This concludes-
Three times, you know, thank you.
Thank you, John. Now we're going to go back to act tonight of aid. The Bill, List, Treasuries Report and District Investment Report are included in the board packet. Are there any discussions? May I please have a motion to approve payment of the bills?
I want to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of three million seven hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-two cents.
Thank you, Mrs. Howlsgate. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Roll call vote.
Holshauser? Humble's?
Aye.
Waggonback?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Felton?
Aye.
How's it going?
Hi.
Motion carried. Information regarding the resolutions to intervene in property tax appeal, board assessment appeals is included in the board packet. Is there any discussion? May I please have a motion to approve the resolutions?
I'll move to approve resolution six through twelve to intervene in property tax appeal. Board assessment appeal is presented.
Thank you, Mr. Felton. May I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Howlsgate. Roll call vote.
Holshauser? Humble's?
Aye.
Waggonback?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Felton?
Aye.
How's it going?
Hi.
Motion carried. Information regarding the driver's education program proposal is included in the board packet. Is there any discussion?
I guess I'll just raise the point that I hit last time. I think all of us are in favor of improving this program for our students. I think we ought to, as a board, look at the fees that are charged for this and do we think they're appropriate? We had a study gone eight months ago, ten months ago, and Dr. Dierman gave us information. He's provided that to us again and showing what various different school districts charge for their drivers education program. And way back eight, ten months ago, whenever it was, we talked about potentially raising the fee for this to a hundred fifty dollars, which is still being substantially less than private services charge in the middle of the range from what other school districts charge. So I think we have to look at this as two vantage points. What do we need to do for our students? What do we need to do for our taxpayers? So I would be in support of this program, but I definitely want to consider as an adjunct to that, raising that fee from fifty dollars to a hundred fifty dollars per district.
Mr. Wiseman, I would suggest it would be best if we did that, assume at the start of next school year, not midstream. How would that affect you? I assume that would be very problematic. Okay. I'm fine with it.
You good with that, Mike?
Yes.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the proposal with the understanding that next school year, we are going to look at increasing those fees?
It will go from fifty to a hundred fifty?
Fifty to one fifty.
That is correct.
May I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the driver's education program proposal as presented with the understanding that starting with the next school year, the fees for that activity will move from a hundred fifty dollars to a hundred fifty dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there a second?
My second time.
Thank you, Mr. Felton. Roll call vote, please.
Waggonback?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Henry?
Felton?
Aye.
How's it going?
Hi.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humble's?
Aye.
Motion carried. Information regarding additions to the board policy. One, colon, ten, one, colon, twenty, one, colon, thirty, two, colon, ten, two, colon, thirty, two, colon, one thirty, two, colon, two forty, three, colon, thirty, five, colon, ten, five, colon, thirty, six, colon, one, seven oh, and six, colon, two, thirty-five. Revisions are included in the board packet. Is there any discussion? May I please have a motion to approve the revisions? Thank you, Mrs. Holshauser. May I please have a second?
Yeah, please read it.
I move to approve the revisions to the board policy. One, colon, ten, one, colon, twenty, one, colon, thirty, two, colon, thirty-two, colon, one thirty-two, colon, forty-three, colon, thirty, five, colon, ten, five, colon, six, colon, one seventy, and six, colon, two thirty-five, three, four.
Is there a second? You don't, you don't have to read all.
Good, yes. Well, I didn't want to make the motion. I will have a discussion though. Has Ann reviewed these carefully as someone on the board?
Yes, and I sat down with her together. We did answer a few phone calls from various board members. The major changes that we have made had to do with small wording or footnote changes and citations, so there wasn't a whole lot that we're changing from our current policy.
Or date changes at the top.
Date changes. Okay, you have a roll call vote.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Felton?
Aye.
How's it going?
Hi.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humble's?
Aye.
Waggonback?
Aye.
Motion carried. Taking care of the Heart Technologies. This concludes the action item portion of the meeting. May I please have a motion to adjourn to closed session?
I want to adjourn to close session to settle the statement of the meeting. Is that the appointment, appointment compensation, and the form of the specific employee due disciplinary basis collective associated managing litigation security with future suspension of management of the law for personal reasons.
Thank you, Mrs. Felton. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Felton. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Time is seven eleven P M. If we were able to do something like a behavioral assistant.